Meeting of Wayne last. Let's go. Sixty people on. I'm sold.
Okay, um, I'll call the meeting to order. And okay, this is Jack. We have Jack come on, right? Yeah. Uh, two regular agenda items tonight. The first is the subdivision on uh Quiet Harbor. And Mary Dennison is here to present that. And then we have the um Happy Camper Cannabis.
That's the whole. This is marijuana.
Uh, yeah, it used to be happy.
Right, okay.
So, it's going to be marijuana. That I do. And then following that, um, I thought it would be a good idea for us just to spend a few minutes going over the ordinance revisions again. I know that several people had additional comments and questions and and issues. Uh, so I think that we should use a little bit of time and make sure that we're all on the same page with all of this and um make sure there are no additional revisions we want to make before we get to hearing. So we'll talk about that following these applications. Um, so first, uh, trying to um Quiet Harbor, um, this is similar to a couple of applications that we done with last year where uh, they're all, if if this is an old subdivision and uh, there are two lots, the owner of these two lots wants to merge them. And um, as you probably remember, there is a provision in the ordinance that allows us to look at minor revisions um uh, the same night as they come in rather than dealing with them as new applications. Um, and uh, I think this one pretty clearly falls within that provision, which is in Article six, uh, three H. So it's under site review. And then revisions to approved plans. And the uh now there are two operative pieces here. One is um it says that if a revision involves only minor modifications of the plan, the planning board may consider the request at the meeting, meaning this meeting of course here. And then um, secondly, it talks about those circumstances under which the planning board would have to deal with the application as a new application. So schedule a hearing, go through the complete process and so forth. But um an exception to that is in um H one E. Um, and it talks about um a re-subdivision involving two or more lots, except for the reallocation of lot lines among three or fewer lots, et cetera. And so this, uh, we are dealing um strictly with with two lots here. Uh, the definition of re-subdivision includes um mergers and reallocating the lot lines and so forth. So uh, this appears to be the provision that we would follow for this.
Paul, can you tell? You have a page number to point me to?
Yes, uh, twenty-four.
Thank you.
And H um.
No change in use, resection upgrade, it's the same use?
Yeah, it's it's a shoreline residential. My understanding is that there is a um there's a residence on one of the lots and the new lot to be merged um is not going to be developed. Um, I believe they're both non-conforming, but Mary will give it to them. Um, and then the only other thing I'd point out in terms of of process and provisions and definitions is that the definition of re-subdivision and re-subdivision is mentioned in H. Um, the division of an existing subdivision or any change in the plan for an approved subdivision, which affects the lot line, including land tran- transactions by the applicant not indicated on the approved plan. Um, everybody good with that? Any, I mean, questions or issues with them?
Just reading.
Second finish rule.
It would appear that that's correct, that they have such a question. Paul.
Okay, now it's not Peter's story.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Mary?
Sure, this is.
Oh, yeah, you get the photo. Big tag.
I'm gonna leave my photo, not out of disrespect, just because I raise it real. Hi, everybody. Um, I haven't been here in a long time. This is fun. Uh, so my client, my department owns two lots down on Quiet Harbor Road, um, both in his trust. And one lot has a lovely home lawn, the other one is a empty lot, vacant lot that's next to common boat ramp area for the Quiet Harbor subdivision. Um, the lots are both less than half acre, so they're they're non-conforming lots, they're legally non-conforming lots because they were approved in the seventies. Um, and he would like to merge them into one lot with a complete understanding that unless something changes radically, he can never divide it then again. And uh, we had a surveyor do a perimeter description as requested by the department officer, so that the new deed that he does will have, it will be from himself to himself, but it will have a full perimeter description of both lots, the original ten and eleven, from the subdivision. Um, and if there's anything else that the planning board requests as a condition, we're happy to talk about it, but I think this is very straightforward.
Okay, anyone have questions from Mary?
I have a question. So will you have to file a new subdivision plan?
My understanding, Jack, that if you're merging two lots, uh, you don't have to file an entire amended subdivision plan. What I am recommending is that in the, in the new deed that we're going to do, that I would, I would like to add a paragraph that references that this re-subdivision, if you will, came before the revealed planning board and was with any luck approved on X date, so that it shows that we've got the ordinance criteria to amend. Um, I don't believe we need to record a new plan, but if you are requesting one, we can certainly talk about it.
Is, uh, I, I, I don't know the answer to this, but in mind, um, is there a way to add a note to the plan? Um, not, not redoing the subdivision plan itself, but adding a note that acknowledges the laws that are supposed to be there.
Well, we, what we do with the registry of deeds, Paul, is ask for a margin reference, which normally if something gets recorded in the registry, the only thing that is filed under, under that chain of titles whomever is the grantor or grantee on the deed. If we ask for a margin reference that references the original Quiet Harbor subdivision plan and all the amendments, then anybody who goes to look at those plans will get triggered over to see that there's a book or page up there that did something different. And they'll see this deed. So I think that's probably the most appropriate way to make that.
Okay. Now, that would do what I'm feeling needs to be done, so. Other questions from Mary? Anyone?
How far from the water are we speaking? Yeah.
Good question. I don't know the answer to that.
Was that no?
I don't, he wants to know the setback for the existing dwelling from the waterline. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I believe it's a non-conforming dwelling. Um, so it's grandfathered, and I don't believe there's anything on a adjoining lot that's being merged in.
Right, that, that much I understood, but I just, there's no information about how far back in the water the camp is, and I was just curious.
Um, the original conveyance into my client came from a woman named Mary Lemick. And I don't know when Mary Lemick built down there, or if she purchased one that was for, but I think it's been a long while, so it may be that it's one of the legally non-conforming houses closer than a hundred feet.
Yeah.
I don't know exactly.
Yeah, I, I expected this.
Not most, a lot of.
My visits, I, I believe it's more than seventy-five feet. But I can't. And there are no plans to do any additional building or anything like that?
No, it's.
Which is literally where they're doing a lot.
Literally.
So somebody doesn't develop, it is reasoning wants to.
And also, if we manage to get this approved and get a deed recorded before April first, it might reflect better on the taxes next year, might not, that's up to the town assessor. There's, that's sort of an underlying, it may reduce the tax.
And so specifically, where is that fact reflected that can't be further divided or divided again?
Well, it would be, I mean, it's sort of inherent in the statute, right? I mean, in the, in the ordinance.
So ordinance.
Once you've merged.
Yeah, I know, I know answer to the ordinance, but.
But we're gonna put it in the deed.
In the deed.
I'm gonna put it right in the language of the deed that I mentioned, the one we talked about planning, we're approved, we're gonna put that in.
Okay. Other questions? Anyone? Okay, since we've agreed, this is a minor revision, um, we are able to vote and dispense with this tonight. And if there aren't any other questions, I take a motion.
I'd move to approve it. Prove the proposed, the um reallocation, however one must to describe it, there must be a better description. The amendment to the subdivision.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second further discussion?
So I've, is, we're approving this subject to, would standard conditions apply and also that the deeds show that any further re-subdivision is subject to planning board approval?
Yes. Yeah, so the plan, the plan is to do that, so I guess the question is, do you want to make that part of the motion?
Yeah.
Peter, do you want to?
Which standard conditions would we be talking about in this context?
The uh, site, site review's standard conditions, most of which are irrelevant to this action.
Well, that's what I wondered.
But there's the, you know, the, the big umbrella standard condition that says you can't do anything different than what you proposed. So that's certainly relevant here.
And then the second thing is the, the note and the deed.
And the note on the deed. Okay, um. So the motion has, has been amended to require adherence to standard conditions and um to require notice on deed. So I would take a second to this revision. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? John?
Yes, I, I vote yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, you all.
That is a. Well, our second applicant hasn't shown. And I sent them voicemail, and we're going to push it to the vacancy, I think.
I have more conflicts with just now that I even read that, but thank you, pity invitation.
So you could go and talk about the L U O.
Well, you know, actually, um do you expect this guy to be?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, well, uh, maybe we could talk about, you know, I was gonna say, I have some issues that I wanted to put on the table that don't really relate to the substance of the application, it's more process, and we could talk about those because I'm thinking it might necessitate some revision to what he's prepared and submitted.
Do we expect it to be Mr. Condon or the owner?
I just said, I, I expected him. He got the agenda. He came in last week to apply more paperwork, and all of those next to him, who was a lucky man.
So I've got, I've got a couple of things um related to, to process and how we handle this and and manage it. Um, so there are, while we're talking about marijuana establishments, there are two sets of rules that apply to those. Um, site review is, is necessary, as is licensing under the marijuana establishment's ordinance, which is a re-filled ordinance. So it's two different things. The um marijuana establishment license is one that the planning board reviews and deals with initially, but um after the decision is issued, it goes to the select board and they do final approval for the town. So that's, you know, a little bit different process. In terms of site review, uh, if you think back to the Happy Cannabis application, um, we did both of those. We did a site review, we did the marijuana establishment license. Um, in the case of the marijuana establishment license, those are non-transferable. Uh, and the ordinance makes it really clear that they are non-transferable. But when I looked at this application, I didn't see any substance. Um, I didn't see any response to the standards. I saw nothing. Um, and so that's a question. And so I, I, you know, I really didn't see any content to this application. Um, and then um, site review. Um um, there's a standard condition that says essentially that all site review permits run with the land, which is a concept that drives me wild, but um nonetheless, it um that is in the standard conditions of approval on page one forty-six. And it says, this permit shall run with the land unless it expires pursuant to Article four, if we're not dealing with here. The permutee may transfer any or all interest in this permit with any transfer of right title or interest to this land. The purchaser or lesssee may assume all his um permissions granted by the permit and shall be responsible for complying with all standard and special conditions of approval. So it suggests to me that a formal action needs to be taken to, although the permit may run with the land, the new owner would have to accept the, you know, whatever had been approved, and also we need to assume responsibility for complying with all of the standards and the conditions. And the way it's expressed here suggests to me that that needs to be like a, a formal acknowledgement that they're taking that on.
I hope you understood that he is the owner now. He took ownership of the property.
I understand that, but he's never been issued a, a site review permit that was issued to Happy Cannabis. So what I'm saying is, if, if he wants exactly what Happy Camper had, and I don't know if he does or not, and the application doesn't, I mean, there is no site application here. There's no reference uh to the site plan. Um so if he wants to take all that on and do it exactly the way we issued it for Happy Camper, and there are a lot of things that he might want to do differently, I don't know, there's a lot of detail. Um, I have no idea if, if he's proposing to do it exactly the same, because he didn't provide any substance. Um, so it perhaps. Um, you know, I think that it needs to be formally acknowledged somehow. Um, obviously, it's a new owner. Um, you know, we, we don't know anything about this business. Um, there's no indication of how he intends to operate, how he intends to address the standards in either the site law or in the marijuana license process. Um you know, I also saw that we have a, like a building and use permit application in the packet, and and that's not really ours to act on.
A layer, it's for an apple island.
Okay. So um, maybe you can shed some light on all that, Chuck.
Well.
I was always gonna have, can I have one?
I have nothing, though.
Yeah.
I have nothing.
I was just gonna say also, his, his company that is licensed to do all this has a different name than the name he wants to call it in town, and I don't know if that matters, but simply he can't be licensed under one, one name, I imagine.
Uh, his state license?
Yeah, his license, like, for example, the previous application, all the previous applications we've had actually in this particular space have been licensed to a particular LLC, it's not uncommon, right?
Well, this is a, an F K D.
It's F K D, his name, LLC, that's his, that's his business license name, that's his legal name.
Yeah.
Is, whereas like Happy Camper Cannabis was the legal name of the business that was licensed.
And so on the
As an example.
The marijuana establishment license.
I didn't know that, but it just seemed odd to me that it was, you're permitted for one company, but then it was called a different name.
Um.
Does that sense?
I mean, he could be.
But with, with, like, chains, franchises or whatever, you buy all three different, you buy all three different box stores. After all, we're owning the same pair of companies. Would that be what we got going? Yep, that's why each store would have a different name, but the
That's true.
Corporation would have the same deed.
That's true, yeah.
I don't know, but.
But in this case, the, in this particular case, though, if the application, if the use of the application runs away, but I think it's important, but we, I'm not a lawyer, so.
Yeah, I don't believe that, that's what I'm asking.
Does it, I mean, I was just bringing them.
Uh, yeah.
Usually this doesn't happen, usually this is not the case.
Yeah.
Uh Chip was Mr. Violet operating the, the previous establishment?
Oh, no. He was the owner of the building and the apartments. He um rented the apartments upstairs and downstairs, he leased to Happy Camper on a lease-to-buy, but it didn't turn out very well.
So Happy Camper was the previous cannabis operator?
Yes, I wasn't here, of course, when that was approved, but so uh, it looks like under the documents we've received that uh at some point, Mr. Violet conveyed the property to his former, now former wife. Do you see that? There's a deed in here.
Yeah.
That she's the owner, yet somehow, Jack put this out to me on the phone, um somehow, there's a quick claim deed that Mr. Violet is now giving to Mr. Beretti. I'm, I believe that's how you pronounce his, our, our applicant, Beretti. Um, so that's odd. Uh, I don't see any deed from Mrs., um, the former Mrs. Violet, I can't remember, if I never heard of her, long enough, saying, is there a deed from her to, to Beretti or a proposed deed or something?
When I read that, I thought that Susan Violet had transferred to Ron Violet.
Yes.
And it knocked the other way around, and now Ron is, is doing a quick claim deed.
Uh, Susan back to Ron?
Yeah.
Well, he's conveying to this new guy what he got from Susan.
Right.
So I think it's okay. I initially read it the opposite, but I think it's that she conveyed to him, now he's conveying to the new guy.
Yeah, that's what I read there.
Yeah, last, last paragraph of Schedule A, D. Yeah, for it. My, this is the same, Violet's the same couple who used to run a convenience store.
Yeah, right. I think it's laid out in Schedule A, the last page, I think it's the last or second to last page on the very bottom. Being on the same premises conveyed from the deed from Susan P. Wrinklevice, FKA Susan R. Rickelwout, to Ron Violet dated October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two. So she went to him, he went to them.
So back to the broader question, um, do you have thoughts about that, Chuck?
He's not here, so we can't answer.
Well, he can't answer.
I understand.
We're talking about the process.
But we're gonna have to, I'll sit down to get a lot more detailed answers on the questions we've had here tonight.
I mean.
It, it was very sketchy and he was like, well, I'll explain a little embarrassed.
Yeah, I mean, there's no way we could have, you know, we, we could find this complete, oh, there's nothing, there's nothing in it, and so it shouldn't be before us at all, in my humble opinion. Um, so you know, I'd be happy to hear your thoughts from everyone else, but I think it needs to go back, you know, we need a real application in front of us. Um, so there's the question of the marijuana establishment license, and there's also the site review deeds, you know, I'm acknowledging that this is a runs with the land situation, but I we need to understand if he intends to operate exactly as Happy Camper did under the site review that they received. And if he doesn't, we would need to revise it. And if he does intend to do that, we need formal acknowledgement of that fact, I believe.
Was Happy Camper a, a medical dispensary only, or was it?
They only allow medical dispensaries in this town.
Oh, oh, that's right. We voted.
So.
You're saying that he would, the new owner would sign something saying he's accepting the conditions in the land use permit that was granted to Happy Camper with all its conditions?
Um yes, I mean, you know, the, the condition says the purchaser or lesssee may assume all permissions granted for them. And so, you know, I, I really.
Is that conveyed from, is that conveyed from the previous applicant or the previous property owner to the applicant?
Well, it's, you know, it's, 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 it's kind of, it's kind of messy because it doesn't, it wouldn't operate exactly the way the standard condition talks about it. It wouldn't come from the um, so Ron Violet was not the permit holder.
Yeah, so I mean, you wouldn't have to come.
Happy Camper. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Business.
Right.
Does that expire if the business is closed?
No, I mean, there is a provision in here that says if you get a new site review permit, you have, I think it's a year, uh, to initiate the construction or the activity. You can get an extension to it, but that's not the situation we're in. It was already issued. And it has been inactive for a while, but I don't see anything in here that addresses that.
But if the business, is she still in business somewhere else?
No.
No. But if the business doesn't exist with the state licensure permits, then it seems like all of, everything would just be non-appointed.
Um from here. Yeah, it, it, for her, it would be, I suppose.
You're saying it lives on in perpetuity in the town, it's a moving process. Maybe not perpetuity, but it lives on in the past, currently, in.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I read. Um.
It seems odd.
Um I mean this is a, this is a piece that I, I look at from time to time and think that, you know, we should have a conversation about it and figure out what makes sense in terms of running the land.
Should be abiding for operating business, but if it's closed.
Yeah.
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 If it's been closed for five years, it's not, I know it hasn't been, you just drive by and go, oh, I'd like to reopen it.
Right.
Leave it.
And, and in all likelihood, you know, it's not going to be, you know, the reopening is not going to be same operation as was originally approved. And Chip, Chip and I have had some conversation around around the barn about this.
It's so new for us. It's so new for us, and so.
Yeah, but um, yeah, I, I think um. I think that, I think that makes, I think that makes perfect sense.
So Chip, were there conversations about? What was in the permit? I mean, had that he interviewed the existing permit intended to.
We had a couple meetings about that, and as you saw, they were like. To be answered at the meeting or not applicable, I'm just like, I think you're gonna need more meat, but. So, you know, we'll, we'll have a sit down, make sure that it's. Much better addressed.
I don't really ever remember being in a position where we had to apply this provision to a. Specific circumstance, you know, and, and say, yeah, that runs with the land and, you know, and I don't ever remember that happening here. But, you know, what, what you say about. An operating business makes all kinds of sense to me.
Well, fortunately, in this case, since we have a marijuana. Or a, a wrong specific, where there's repelling marijuana. They can't, yeah, you, we, we should look at the. Maybe amending the legislature, but for this situation, no can skate through because you're gonna have to. Comply with at least with the marijuana establishment.
Yeah, at, at least with that, but there's other stuff, you know, that's in the site review, like. You know, one thing that comes to mind that potentially could be an issue is, you know, what about parking and traffic? There are. You know, multiple reasons why that could be. Radically different with a new owner than the old owner. I mean, she had given us um estimates of how many customers per day or per hour, whatever it was. And I think it would be, you know, astonishing if he came back with exactly the same numbers.
Yeah, she had operating hours, so.
Right, right, uh, there was a lot of detail that I, I just can't help but believe, you know. Would likely be different with this one.
Uh, did you, when you started this discussion, were you reading from this standard conditions of approval number ten?
Yes.
Okay. So, but if Happy Camper has disappeared, how would he assume? How would she transfer? Any and all interest in the permit?
Well, you know, as we talked about it, and you know, I, I. I'm finding myself in complete agreement with Brandon's assessment, which is that, you know. If it's an operating business, then you can do a transfer, the way it's specifically the way it's described in number ten.
Yeah.
But we don't have that here, and um, so.
And I think that's a defundable interpretation of that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do too.
You know, drive by, it used to be a cat dealership.
Right.
Yeah, you don't just. You don't just get to open a new business there.
It used to be pizza, which infected, yeah.
You still got, I, so I thought that. Yeah, we don't think there's like a waiver, the site review criteria, anything like that based upon. The fact that it was this before, I don't think it's. But even, but it's, it's probably moot because I think surely there's gotta be one of those conditions that's different. Therefore, it would probably not be transferable, or not entirely transferable.
Yeah, and I, I mean, conditions are one thing, if I recall correctly, there weren't a lot of um. Uh, special conditions on that approval, but the approval. Is based on all of the information and the detail that comes in in the application. So they're bound to that, if they say that their hours of operation are, you know, seven to seven. That's what it is unless they come in and revise it.
That's true.
Because that's what we've approved. And so all of that um would have to be submitted, you know, it sounds to me like.
Look.
If there's agreement around that central point, then he needs to come in with a site review application, a full, brand new site review application.
Shall be done.
I think there's too many variances, I mean.
Yeah.
Surprisingly, this is our third time we've been through this with a marijuana.
Actually, it's the fourth time.
Fourth time.
Happy Camper came in downtown.
Oh, that's right.
Before their final hearing. The place was sold underneath them, and then they came back a second time, we had full hearings about the new location.
Okay, but all those were very extensive, like. Uh, air, air management and. You know, screening, and there's a lot of detail.
Ventilation and odor and security and.
And the furnace was very specific, like this specific security system.
And, and it needs to be to comply with the marijuana for.
Yeah, so I mean, I think it would be. I don't see, I, I don't see any other way but to get a whole.
Any other thoughts about this? Anybody? Is there agreement on that? Anybody disagree? A brand new site review application and um a real. License application for marijuana establishment, which this is not.
I would, I would just go back to my comment too about that business name, I was reading his business uh. Rules, because he, he did provide. And it's specific to this address, it's specific to this building. And it's specific to the company name and the building, so it seems worthy of a little different name to the business.
I guess I need clarity on that.
He can apply for a DBA with the secretary.
Which is what.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have what, we have happened to one downtown has done, it's.
Yes.
But he needs to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, he, maybe he has done that, but he doesn't know.
I would guess not, but you may know.
But if he hasn't done it, he probably needs to do that, too. Feels like a few meetings away.
Anything else on this, any other thoughts? All right. Site review, marijuana establishment, DBA.
Looking though, that's a full new site review.
Yeah. Yeah, so let's spend a few minutes on L U O.
Question before we do.
Yeah.
Just by protocol procedure and everything, are we gonna deny this, or are we gonna continue it? What is, what do we do with this?
Uh, we don't do anything with it because we don't have anything.
Or if you were a lawyer, it says not right.
Tell him, call him. Right.
Right.
So.
Is it, is it, sorry, I was just, I totally, I totally agree, I was asking the question because I'm. Trying to refresh my memory on procedure, but would you not find it incomplete? And then state in, in a motion that it needs to be, if it needs to be represented, it will be represented as such, do you think? A B C?
Well, we could do that, I guess, you know, my thought was that we, we really don't, we don't have it. We don't, we don't have an application, we don't have a site review application. And we have a marijuana application with no content, so.
Works for me.
So um L U O, um. Just to refresh everybody's memories, um. At the last meeting, we had had some conversation about making modifications to the language. And Janelle had provided those changes. Back, and I had made um. A few revisions to those changes that he made, I made a few corrections and I made a few modifications. Uh, not a lot, um, and then I sent that out to all of you, and. Lo and behold, I'm not sure what the issue is, it might be um that my. I use a Mac and it doesn't always translate to other computers apparently, and I have no idea. What, you know, what translates and what doesn't, but I did hear that. That there was only one color on the corrections, and I had done it so that um what I sent to you. What showed up on my screen was the document, the document that Janelle had sent. And his changes as a result of the last meeting were in red. And then the modifications that I made, I put on top of that in blue.
Yeah, they get new.
Okay.
All red.
They're all red, okay.
But I think I got two shades of red.
Okay, well, that's good, that's good, that's something. So uh I can run through those quickly, they're not extensive, as I mentioned, and then I know Jack has a couple of issues. Uh, that he mentioned, and I got your original here, and one of those, um, one of those issues. Is, is Jack's issue as well, you know, the occupancy.
Can I check my, can I truth my statement with you? In two different colors?
Yeah, yeah.
Like.
Do you want to start on first page?
Just on the first, just one time, the, we'll go to page five at the bottom line.
Page five.
Seventeen, and we just, we just cross the escape. Sixteen minutes.
Okay.
Where. There's red language that says, except for affordable housing developments established in accordance with that statement.
Yeah.
And then towards the end of that sentence, it says, refer to Article A, section G, that's crossed out, and and is added.
Right.
And then uh at the end of the sentence, it then has a parentheses, it says, refer to Article A, section F, close parentheses.
Right, I put it at the end.
So you added that. So I see two colors here, I see a sort of maroon.
Yeah, yeah.
So you added the, which one did you add?
So I added the, the and.
Okay, so you added this.
It maroon probably.
Marooning colors.
Yeah.
Okay. So I can see.
It reads a lot better than blue, I'm sure.
I can see your minutes.
Okay, so starting on page one, um. Um, what, uh, Jack and I talked about this a little bit, and. And Jack was looking for it to reflect something in particular, and um. I became concerned about the language that, that Janelle had inserted. Which would read um. An accessory dwelling unit is allowed. Within or attached to, and I eliminated that and simply inserted. Expansion of a non-conforming structure to create an accessory dwelling unit. Shall not result in an increase in non-conformity, so I think the thought there. Is that if you are going to expand a non-conforming structure. With dwelling unit. It cannot increase non-conformity. You're, you're also required to adhere to the requirements obviously in the um, in Article Eight relating to A U's. And um, not uh. But in any event, um, that expansion of. And then to create an accessory dwelling unit, uh, that was my language that I inserted, and I know Peter, you haven't found that to be a language.
Unfortunately, it shall not. Could mean what you just said, that is, it cannot, or shall not can mean it doesn't.
Okay, so this is the same thing that we talked about with regard to the statutory language a couple of meetings ago.
Yeah, that's what I, I. In an email I sent just yesterday that I only sent to Paula and copy to Jack. I see it's a whole different formulation, trying to accomplish the same thing. As what I think you're trying to accomplish, Paula. Saying the establishment or construction of a, of an accessory dwelling unit to a non-conforming. Uh, structure may not be done in a manner which results in an increase in non-conformity. Something like that.
I'm, I'm fine with that. You're okay with that?
That's fine with me.
I mean, uh, the beginning of a, um. Let's see.
It doesn't have, you could play with those words, I mean. I, I, I kinda like that, but I would just say the rest of the ordinance is written with the word shall not.
Yeah, which is.
Shall not is a.
Which is the.
A little disagreement for comment, I'm just.
Yeah, actually, yeah, the, the reviser of statutes in main legislative, the main legislature's service or by, no longer permits you to use shall.
In legislate.
In legislative language, in bills.
Okay, and the only reason I put shall not in there is that there are ten thousand shall nots in this ordinance. At some point, we might want to clean it up, but I didn't want this one little bit to be different.
Well, shall not may not seem very.
Yeah.
Well, often, often it's the same, except I was concerned when I first read last meeting. That someone might have down the road, might interpret that to mean that it doesn't, that the expansion doesn't. Or um.
Yeah, that's.
Which is not what we intend.
Right.
What is it?
Doesn't represent what they directed, is the question.
I guess if they directed it, they would have said will not.
Well, I, I think your language, Peter, accomplishes what everybody wants it to do, so. Lesser in objections, we can go with that. Um, let's see, on page, um. Um, the bottom of page five, the one that Henry just used. So I'm trying to sort through colors. The only thing I did there was to rearrange the sentence a little bit, I found it really awkward, the way Janelle had drafted it, so. I. Rearranged it to say, except for affordable housing developments established in accordance with title. And which are eligible for density bonus. And then put the reference to Article Eight at the end rather than in the middle of that sentence.
And you didn't intend it strikes the number, right, that's just the next one?
Just strike what?
Oh, yours is the same, what's Charlie doing?
Yeah.
Oh, God, how's yours different?
What's the, what the number?
Mine has seventeen, it's broken, and then the.
Oh, really?
Seventeen, eighteen, and fifteen.
And I have seventeen, but underneath the. The sentence, and there's seventeen there.
Wow. You know, one thing you might do, Henry, um, did you download that, or you're just reading it off, you just clicked the document when it came up?
Downloaded.
You did, okay, thought that would make a difference, but apparently not, never mind. I tried, tried, tried downloading it because it might make a difference, um. Um, then, the next thing I did was on page nine, this is just a little stuff, but you'll see it as a change. In G two. Second law, like, there was a reference to the ordinance, and I changed it to this ordinance.
G two?
Uh, G two, second.
I need to bring it, page a lot of actually.
I'll look into it right back to them.
Mine's on page nine.
What's the date of that? Over two thousand three, three twenty-four, M T head.
We're talking about, oh, the camp, the documents that came under March seventh email. Your March seventh email.
Yes.
Page nine.
It, my page nine.
I see it, this, the. Not the, but this.
Right.
Yeah, well, I, I have it, yes, yes, I did.
And then in F, also in the second. And then in F, also in the second line, um. It, it was awkward wording there. Uh, in the second line, it says, except in the middle. And originally it said, except for the minimum land area and maximum lot coverage requirements do not apply. So I substituted that for four. So now it says, except that those requirements do not. And then in F. Uh, also in F, uh, the one, two, three, four, five, the sixth line down. Almost to the end. There was originally reference to a single-family dwelling. And I changed that to the single-family dwelling. Because we're talking about the dwelling on that lot, not just any single-family dwell. Um, page ten, it would be G.
May I go, may I? The last sentence of F there on page nine?
Yeah.
Is, did you change anything from the, I'm looking at a larger. I think I'm looking at, uh, Jamal's latest last draft. And I'm looking at yours too, but I can't read it, it's all a five. Did you change that last sentence at all from his?
The last sentence?
Yeah, so it's the shall not problem again. Construction or establishment. Of an accessory dwelling unit shall not cause.
All right, you want to put a may in there also?
Yes.
Okay. May not. On the top of page ten in I, the first line. Um, Jamal's version said, the applicant shall apply with all other provisions, and I substituted. Comply. And that's it. Except that, um, I think that. We should go back and talk specifically about, uh, G. G two. C. And, uh, Jack raised this issue and Peter raised the issue. And, um, I think it probably is right for similar discussion.
The statement, the owner must occupy a single family dwell.
Right, so we had a whole conversation around what the residency requirement should be. And, um, Brandon had suggested that we just require that. The owner of the single-family dwelling, um. Occupy that, if I remember correctly, um, occupy that at the time that the A D U was constructed. Did I get that right?
I think so.
Okay. So Jamal's version came back and, uh, and it says. Um, occupy as their primary legal residence at the time of construction. So that brings up the issue, I don't think there's any question about there, there needs to be some occupation. By the owner of the single-family residence. But I, I think the, the question that's still kind of hanging out there is. So what does that mean? How long? Uh, you know, is it, is it their primary legal residence, which would mean probably six months and a day? Or do we want to allow, um, as some have suggested. That, uh, if someone is, uh. Uh, spends the winter in Florida and they're only out here for the summer. Do we intend for them not to be able to build an A D U on the block? So that's kind of a question. Jack, you want to talk about that some more? You've had some calls.
Well, I think the first issue was, I didn't know what primary legal residence meant. So I thought we would have to define it, and the main revenue service has all these different definitions, so. That was confusing. And then, and then the second point which you just raised is. Even if we did define it to be a hundred and eighty-three days a year, whatever. Um, at the time of construction. Would that, that would preclude people who own. A house and live in it like three or four months of the year from having an A D U.
Probably, but my understanding of primary legal residence. It's, of course, each state sets, determines that to some extent, and so it's not entirely consistent across the country, but. For example, in, in Maine, it's, it's where you, if you vote here, and if your car is registered here.
Yeah.
Uh, that itself, and I think you, uh, you can only have one, of course, one legal residence. One legal domicile, one legal domicile. You might consider yourself a resident of two places or more, but the one legal domicile. I think putting the term legal in, as Jamal did, I think. Is creates undue restrictions on the ability of people to add onto their houses. The heck, I, I don't know why we, why that should be in. I understand you want to have some owner occupancy, um, element, but.
I think that's the key part, just.
I, that's what I suggested, just it's arbitrary. But one, one possible approach would be to say that the owner. Would have to have occupied the residence for this ninety days during the immediate, the calendar year preceding the, the establishment of the A D U. It could be ninety days, it could be a hundred twenty days, it could be something, but, but I don't think you should. Limit it to legal resident. Because that would knock out everyone who spends a hundred eighty-one days in Florida. Or whatever, whatever that is that makes you a Florida resident, so you could avoid being.
So, so it wasn't for you, it wasn't so much the, the period of time that was required, it was more about the, the legal residence concept.
Well, I don't like believing using legal residence concept here at all. I mean, if it were to be personally, I wouldn't have a restriction at all. But I think that's a minority view. I mean, in terms of who could build on an A D U, I would not have a restriction.
I don't agree with you, yeah. I don't agree with you. I, I think as far as the language goes, the language I've seen is, is permanent residence. You fill out an application for anything in Maine, most way of permanent residence versus your non-permanent residence. Well, we could look that up, that's like minor issues and the.
But that would rule out the people like you say.
Well, so, it's like, I'm, I'm not, I'm not suggesting it's correct, no, I'm just saying the language, primary legal residence, I don't like that. Sure, but I think the right language is permanent residence, if you wanted to go with.
You want to call that concept.
Yeah, I think that's the right.
But if you went with Peter. The ninety-eight or whatever, the, the people that go to Florida for the winter, which should be able to do it.
I think you need to have a bright line, if you could. Whatever number you give, but I think it has to be a bright line some, so that the CEO can determine.
But what's the purpose of it? I mean, if you. What would happen if you didn't have that restriction? In practicality, you'd have people. Putting an accessory dwelling unit on a house and then doing what? Well, leasing it out.
I mean, Airbnb.
Rent, rental, I mean, just.
So then, so therefore is that, is that something we, you, you, as a community, should be restricted or not restricted? That's probably what we're asking, because that's the impact of the state.
You know, we, we had. We had agreed at the outset of our conversation about all of this stuff that we're going to. Navigate around the whole issue of short-term rentals because it's a quite a matter. And maybe we'll look at it at some point. But, you know, I, I think, in my mind. Possible net effect of saying, there's no residency requirement, you just, you know, anybody who owns a dwelling. Um, a single-family dwelling can put an A D U on the property. So in that case. The owner of that house would never have to live there. It could be strictly a rental property, and they could still put an A D U on the property. And. And I'm, you know, looking, looking at the statute, it.
It's not.
It, the intent, you know, appeared to be to accommodate, um, you know, a whole range of situations, but. But a housing need, um. In one way or another, either, you know, it's, it's the, it's the in-laws, or, or maybe you do, I think they even mentioned, mentioned. Rental income from an A D U when, you know, that's in the statute, I believe. But, um, I don't know that it envisioned. You know, opening up an opportunity for a whole property just to be seasonal rentals. But I think that's the possible net effect.
Yeah, I, I think you'll see people buying the starter homes. Below price zones, slapping at the A D U, renting both out. And. Renters, short-term, long-term, they will always have the same community ideas, people. They're uninvested in just the owner has.
Yeah, you know, you create more of a transient population in your community than you do.
Yeah, yeah, I.
So.
I think that's.
So. It's a pretty important distinction, I think, for that reason. I feel like we need something.
Yeah.
So we allow them to do this. I mean, in like many cases with, you know, state law. Whether it's shoreline or whatever, you can't make something less. Towards the point of why the statute's there. Statute here is absolutely here to increase housing.
Yep.
So I think maybe this, we, we could have it come to us that you're restricting, you know. Increasing housing stock by doing this. I'm just asking the question, well.
I've looked at it now many times, section forty-three, sixty-four dash A and title thirty-eight. If you look at subsection one, it says one thing, you look at subsection three, it says a different thing. So someone eventually is going to litigate that. Hopefully it won't be us. Won't be, I, I, I. I don't think that, I'll make it this way, if we require owner occupation, I don't think that violates the statute. Unless, so until, until unless some court tells me I'm wrong. But I do think that there are certain restrictions, the more restrictive you get, the more you.
Yeah.
You invite litigation about whether we're complying with the legislative intent.
I think that's, I think that's a good statement that you made, Peter. I think if it's. If the, if the requirement in town is, if the requirement in this intent is to have owner occupation untimed. But have. Uh, at, you know, in order to be able to put an accessory dwelling unit or, or have that being used as an accessory dwelling. That, that doesn't prevent accessory dwelling unit from being rented. It doesn't prevent it from being used or. Has, has all the uses that it could be applied for. That's the additional housing, we're getting, you know, the additional housing isn't the primary. Problem, the primary. Unit of the property, it's the accessory.
Yeah, and like I said, even the statute talks about.
So, yeah, so therefore, therefore the single. The owner must occupy is really, you know. You don't want the owner, what you don't want is the owner to not occupy, that's what, going back. So the owner occupation requirement, I think, is important.
Yeah.
But it's. Now, whether it's their primary residence.
Yeah, and, and, and.
I mean, like the fault, most of the time it probably would be.
Yeah, then, you know, and the question becomes, uh, occupy it. To what extent?
I think occupy.
Permanent year round.
Well, I mean, if it's for, uh, if it's your permanent residence, it's gonna be year round, but you gotta be there. Whatever that definition is legally, which in my opinion means your, our majority of the year, so it's fifty.
A hundred eighty-one days.
I mean, a hundred eighty-one and a half days, you know, that's, you know, that's your, that's the.
And then.
I mean, that's how it works with the state license, it's how, the taxes, that's how it works with everything, so I mean, that's not gonna get challenged because that, that machine is. Used for all sorts of things.
Well, if we did that, the practical effect of that would make it very hard for people of the shoreline zone, many of whom are seasonal residents. To put in A D Us. Of course, there'd be other reasons they should be putting in A D Us, but let's assume that they have enough room to do it.
Right, so assuming, assuming that all the setbacks and that, blah, 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 they put in. Yeah, so that would be limiting that circumstance, but then again. Do you really want them to be renting their property out to two, two different people?
Well, those, you know, I, I, again, we're speculating, but if you own some short-term property, I don't know if you'll be using it that way. It, it's more likely the A D U would be for friends or family.
I might have been thinking of short-term property, I was thinking.
I wasn't either.
I was thinking about, you know, some of the more accessible, cheaper property.
I don't think it'll probably, you know. Always great to do this.
Yeah, I, I think those two circumstances are likely to yield two different results. I mean, you know, the, the cheap. Uh, cheap property inland, somebody might buy up, and then the shoreline property, and I think problems would be different potentially in those two locations. Chip?
One of the problems that brings up is in exist a right, so it's not speculation. One of our neighboring towns. That there's been a problem with. In-law apartments that have been rented by the owners to, as a, you know, short, long-term rental. And they're on dirt roads. You know, that are pretty much inaccessible, and the problems that, you know, we've encountered, our neighbor hasn't countered. Is, you know, there are a lot of problems created there, so if somebody put. Say a Moranik shores or Torsey shores, you know, uh, you know, an A D U at the end of the road, renting it out to somebody for a year-round rental. There's, there's real problems there. It's excess, you know, wear and tear on the, you know. It's gonna mess with the road associations too, I mean. So I think that it's inviting.
Well, I, 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 the intent of the law is not to, uh, encourage. Uh, you know, additional housing in complicated areas, right? It's just to. Encourage additional housing. As an accessory unit, kind of as a general blanket opportunity, so. I sort of feel like there's a lot of other things that have to be considered.
Will that, will that involve the road association? Well, the town's laying it on, I mean, the state's laying it on the town, the town's laying on road associations, you know, it's.
They, they usually hold the road on this.
Well, do that.
I mean, they may.
Well, the road association, yet they have the road there, but there's still social emergency services and everything else that are affected in this type of thing.
That's true.
You know, you have a fire, you send roads like they are.
I guess I'll just go back to the, to the, the permanent resident or. Primary, whatever the right word is, residence versus any resident. I, I think it has to be. I, I think there has to be, it, it's complicated because I don't, I think we also. Having, having a part-time resident. Build an accessory unit is not the priority of, you know, having a second, first person with a second home building. The expansion of their home under an accessory dwelling ordinance is, the law is not the intent. Built over the law, you know, it, it's supposed to be for people who have a primary. Who can, who can expand their, uh, you know. Their living. I, at least I think that is, and also if you do put a permanent residence down, you do. By, by the nature of where most, I'm not saying all, but most of the, say, secondary homes are in our community. In, is, in the, in those shoreline areas or some of those more sensitive areas, not all, but a lot of them. And, and, you know. Think about, think about how many reviews there were, there could potentially be related to. Related to leaving that wide open from a planning work perspective, from an administration perspective, or from your perspective. I mean, it would be quite a lot. So by putting something like that in, you kind of narrow it, narrow the field a bit. And then I think the concept of rentals. Is something that should be taken up, we may, we may choose to modify the, the ordinance in the future, if it's not challenged before then. We may, we may choose to address that separately.
That, that's on, at some point.
I, that's great.
And. But I don't, I don't think you can leave it open first and then, then come back with a rental ordinance in a year or two or three. Then you gotta narrow that, and then you open it back up, it's kind of great. Why would that need to go there?
I mean, Chip, earlier you were saying that we shouldn't touch short-term rentals with a ten-foot pole, but now you're saying we need to.
No, 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 I'm saying we have to, but not, I said that in light of this, we need to get it done for July.
No, 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 I say that we have to, but not, I said that in light of this, we need to get it done for July, June, July, okay? That's the law. We're working hard, we spent a lot of money on it, but you put something like that into it. The town votes it down and you're back to square one. You don't want to make these things that way. We had an example. A year ago, when we had, you know, the political stuff going on. I think you've got to keep it simple here, not simple, but not complicated and not bring in, you know, taking time bomb that's gonna, you know, kill this. I do believe that we need to address Airbnbs and short term rentals. I get it every time I go to a. Code officers meeting about the liability and the problems the state's had, but it's a different issue, and this issue has to be taken care of. In a short term. Okay. I think, I mean, I'll stop talking. I think, I think. I kind of like the way it's written. I don't necessarily primary legal residents, but permanent residents or majority year residents.
Oh, so you have to be a permanent resident of the town of Weedfield, you couldn't live. Like in Winthrop and have a house here.
Say that again, Jack, I didn't hear you.
Well, if you, if you, if your primary residence was in Winthrop, but you had a summer house in Weedfield. Would you have to? You you couldn't build the ADU onto the summer house in Weedfield because you. Live in Winthrop. I mean, do you have to be a, when you say.
You can only have one primary residence, and in the state of Maine, wherever your primary residence is, if your, if your other primary residence is in the state of Maine, you can do an ADU on that property.
Yeah, you can build it in Winthrop.
Really? It's like you get one homestead. You get one homestead exemption, you get one.
If you own the house, live there, you're gonna.
The fusion was, it said at the time of construction, or let's say, construction takes a year or two. Do you mean at the start of construction? Or at the time of the application or the time of approval of the application?
Um, well, that's why I don't think time of construction is all too, creates all sorts of interpretive art. Questions, but if you put a certain time, number of days of occupancy required in the immediately preceding year. Then at least you'd have a standard. But I I just want to read two sentences from the governing statute, the one on ADUs. And I. It says, a municipality shall allow an accessory dwelling unit to be located on the same lot as a single family dwelling unit. In any area in which residential uses are permitted. Um, it then goes on to say, even in the case of a grandfather law. An accessory dwelling unit is allowed. Um, as long as it doesn't further increase the non-conformity. So I, I think if we put in a legal residency requirement, I think we're really rubbing up against what the statute seems to say.
Isn't that kind of like an oxymoron, that you can't put on a accessory unit and not make it more non-conformist?
Oh, I agree, it is an oxymoron, but let's just stick with, that's, that's a different problem. The first sentence says. Any, in in any, an ADU can be built. In in any area in the same lot. Uh, in any area of the town in which residential uses are permitted.
Which we'd still be allowing there, but you have to live in a house.
You know, we're not saying that's not allowed.
Because if you live in the house, you're gonna. Build a better.
But well, but we don't require that people, we don't say you can't build a house here unless you're gonna be a legal resident. I like it. Of the town. So I'm just saying, if I were to talk about occupation. And then you know, nothing the statute talks about it. There's no, the word occupied isn't, no, but, okay.
No, I, you know, I don't know what the basis for Jamel's, um. Backbones to this was, but um, I know that he has. Looked at this and inserted it in a number of municipal ordinance.
Yeah, I asked him, but I.
I choose to.
I have to be talked to a lawyer about it, and I have other, I have other towns approved it with something like this in that.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Well, I think the law directs cities that are mostly rental properties. No, no, because the cities had to adhere last year, they extended it around smaller communities, so. They're saying that we have to do it too.
I think that's the problem.
Hmm.
It would bring it on me.
Yeah, I think he was saying, wasn't he saying that uh, Jamel was saying that other towns wanted him to put that in? The residency requirement?
Yeah, other towns did want, but I, I I think that, um, I. I I just, I don't know what his specific basis for doing it was, but I, um, I think he believed that it was. In accordance with the statute, but.
John, you look very ominous.
Yeah, you do. Really creepy.
Backlighting my foot.
Oh, yeah, I can turn my light on. No, they, um, but I I think, you know, I think that that was the thing. I mean, he, he did it because. That's what towns wanted. And I I think, um, uh, you know, the the problem is, as has already been spoken, that. You know, there's a lot of gray areas here and we're not gonna, we're not gonna know what's required until somebody litigates it. Um, but I guess, you know, I I wanna, I want everybody to be clear about. What is the fear now that we're talking about if we don't have a residency requirement? What what is that fear?
Well, we 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 talked about it a little bit a few minutes ago, um, and one of the potential issues, um. Actually, one Henry raised was that theoretically someone could come in and buy inexpensive. Housing. And not for the purpose of living there, but for creating a rental situation and then put an ADU in. And Brandon pointed out how that has the potential for changing the, you know, the nature of the community, the dynamic. People living here.
No, that's true. I think, I think that's true, but uh, you know, Peter was talking about, well. I mean, that seems to be what the statute's all about. Is allowing that. Um. And and I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest that we don't want to. You know, be be wor- be worried about that. It's just that, um. I I think Peter might be right that. You know, we're not sure whether or not, you know. Somebody's gonna challenge us if we put in a residency requirement. Of course, that that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. Uh, if if that's what we are. Want to do, but, um. Um.
I I I think, I think I would just add to the, I don't know if fear is the right word, but uh, I would just add to the. You know, if you don't have something like that, you have. The potential to have an enormous volume of. Applications and, you know, one of the, what's it called? Um, so let's not say you can't do it, but I'm just putting that out. Um, I also think that, you know, you do have. You do have people and you do have people. Uh. You know, you do have situations in the state where people are. People think very differently about about that, and so I, you know. People moving around and the transient populations and, you know, it's, it's a, it's, it is what it is, but. Um, I think that's what it wants in some town or in some not. Some towns may have. An ordinance in already addressing rental companies and things like that. We don't, so I think it, I think. I think to me, it's like the rental factor is the, is the driver. So it, I agree with Brandon too about sort of the. The increase in potential, uh. Transient populations in and out of a rental situation. So without a rental ordinance, I think it's a very different, different thing. They do go together, the state and then that. I think those are linked closely together. So without a rental ordinance, I think it's. Appropriate to put in a little bit more of a restrictive, I think this primary residence thing is probably a good thing to do at this point. But knowing that we probably need to commit to working on. A rental ordinance or what are you calling, I don't know what it is, but many towns have those. We don't. Otherwise, you just become a rent, you could, let's say you will, you could become just a rental community. Wayman. I suppose. Not so bad.
So, um.
I I think if we don't, there won't be any starter homes. For sale that the kids that grew up in town will be able to buy.
Yeah.
They're gonna be bought out by the people that already own three with ADUs to back add. So they can have two more rentals, and they don't care who lives there. They don't care if they pay the rent, but they paid the rent. You, you could be. You could be invested really well.
Yeah, I think it actually restricts. It has, it has the intention to restrict it, have the opposite impact of what the law is trying to accomplish, so. So the language is. In front of us.
Yeah.
Which I thought is what we agreed to last time. Is, is that still? On the table?
Yeah.
I was concerned that it wasn't, it wasn't adequately defined.
Yeah, that was, that was the first concern that Jack raised, was that it it talks about, um. Uh, primary legal residence and there was a question about what that meant. So that's, that was kind of a jumping off point. You know, what does primary legal residence that mean? And. Jack had looked at that further and then, um. You know, we have, we have these, these, um. Other issues as well that have been raised at this point as part of the discussion about. Your primary legal residence is definitely more restrictive than saying something like, you know, you have to live there for ninety days or. You know, so.
This is less restrictive than what? You want to start and then put.
Um. It is, um, I don't remember what your first draft said, but it was, um, yeah, it was more.
Well, I have what we worked up.
Think that the owner had to be there all the time forever.
Ooh.
That's right, because there had to be some kind of a, some kind of a document that ensured. That the owner was going to remain in occupancy. And we had eliminated that piece.
On primary.
The ordinance is open, give it an address. So. It's your address.
And 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 that, Henry, is what. The, the, what was the term that you were using, Henry? Permanent residence?
Permanent, I'm just looking at the tax laws. Permanent legal, permanent legal residence is how I have the main revenue service.
The main revenue service has like four different definitions.
They do. Well, they have, they have residence, say harbor resident, park year resident, non-resident. But permanent legal residence. The state in which you're domiciled in is your permanent legal residence.
Domicile means where you, where you conduct most of your activities, I think.
Permanent legal residence is the place that you intend to make your home for a permanent or definite period of time. And generally the place where you dwell and which is the center and is the center of your domestic, social and civic life.
That's a really bizarre.
That's the main.
Well, that's why I lost college to go here, I went to college here, but that's, I'm sorry. Uh, not all states have that same standard. Uh. Well, if we have a variance standard in terms of how we distinguish between, uh, on variance standards, uh, we don't use, what's the term we use in the variance, uh? Ordinance, ooh. Am I looking at the right ordinance? Is it? Under only under board of the form appeals ordinance, there's also in the.
No, it's not, it's not.
And it says, um. Um. Primary legal residence.
Yeah.
Is, I believe, the standard in the, for, that that can, uh. Makes a variance somewhat easier to get than if it isn't. Uh, but, um. I've already said what I need to say.
There's so many words in here. Permanent place of abode.
Ooh.
But but you're right, there is a, there is a, a language here that talks about. Uh, principal residence, the location of your principal residence.
Principal.
Principal residence is also whether you could, whether you're, in Maine is defined as a place where you spend most of your time. Which is very generic. Uh, but also whether or not a homestead or veteran property tax exemption is applicable.
That's, that's a key right there.
So if your homestead exemption is not applicable to the property, then that's not your primary residence. Is it Maine, it's applicable to your primary residence, only one, one.
So you're saying if you get the homestead exemption for your house.
Right.
Then it's your, that's legally your.
Right, because you have to live in Maine the majority of your, but it's in Maine, and you'll only have one, you only have one, so you have two properties, and maybe only have one.
So, I mean, what's, what's everyone thinking about that? I think that, you know, the big. Um. Conceptual split is between. Requiring something like that, um, for an extended, you know, for an extended period, I mean, principal. Principal legal residence, is that the term?
So the principal is wrong.
Um, or, uh. Or opening it up to allow. You know, the, uh, uh, the snowbirds to. Build, who make them offer sixty or ninety days to build in a new one there on the. Um, that, that seems, that seems to be the split.
To be willing to maybe use. Fact that it either has a homestead exemption or qualifies for a homestead exemption. Which would bring what you were talking about. Into the ordinance and. That would limit it to one. It would limit it to somebody that qualifies for a homestead, so they have to live here. And their domicile is everything, and that, that might just be the pergiade. Either has or has the ability to.
What a simpler approach to, and this is something we talked about before, but. But might it be simpler to just prescribe? A number of days of residency in the primary. Dwelling. You know, if you live there. Whatever the number is, one hundred and eighty-two days.
One hundred and eighty-three days, no.
Three.
What about a lead? I think maybe that accounts for, I think no, it's.
How do you enforce it?
How do you enforce that?
There's. I'm reading, the state defines it as domicile, the the person is a domicile resident. Or statutory resident. The domicile resident is somebody who lives in Maine, has insurance policies, lives in Maine more than one hundred and eighty-three days a year. Its statutory residence is somebody who doesn't live in Maine, one hundred and eighty-two days a year, but has like driver's license of water. Well, that's the primary difference, but that's the person, not the problem.
Yeah.
Right, so the property is treated by the homestead.
Yeah, but but what we're, what we're talking about here is the owner of the primary.
So if the owner of the primary residence, then if it should be occupied. By, but it would be occupied by a. Uh, a domicile, you know, it's, if it's occupied by a dome, according to the state, it's occupied by a domicile resident or. Permanent, if they're permanent property, their primary property, then they would get a homestead exemption on that property. And they pay main taxes, et cetera, et cetera.
Kind of a show on their land, right?
And that's, then they, then, that's what we're talking about. Versus the other situation, which is. Well, there's, there's multiple other situations, but that's, the other one we were just talking about is the, is the. Is the snowbird situation.
Okay, so what's everybody thinking? What's your inclination? Just do a little straw poll here.
I'd go with a hundred and eighty-three days.
Jack, what are you thinking?
Um. Well, I I don't support the whole concept, but if I were, I'd say the. The place where you. Receive your home, your main homestead exemption. At, at the time of application for the ADU. At at the time of application for the ADU.
What 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 concept is it that you don't support? Because we should talk about all of this. If you if you think. That permanent residency thing is a problem, then, you know, we need to talk about that.
I mean, we we talked about it, you know, about. Whether you want people who. Don't have a connection, as great a connection to Reedfield to be able to do ADUs and the sense of the board seems to be that. They want people to be more permanent residents. I I just. Don't agree with that, but I. I think Peter and I are sort of in the same camp on that. But if if the board wants to do that, I think the homestead exemption is. Because you can validate that with the town that they receive, they have a homestead exemption. And and do it at the time of application, because I think the time of construction is. Is a little squishy. Or pick some sometime at which they have to have. Their homestead exemption, time of application or time of completion of the ADU, what they get their certificate of occupancy. Or something like that.
Uh Brandon, um what's your position?
I I'll leave it. Jack's idea with the homestead exemption of the. That you have to be there. Like he said, the construction is kind of great, but when you get the permit.
Yeah, at at the time of the application or something.
Yeah.
That connects it. And Peter, you want to. Open it up.
Well, I don't think the statute lets us do this. Uh at least not limiting it to permanent residents or legal residents, homestead exemptions. Statute says. That that we must allow an ADU located on the same lot as a single family dwelling in any area where we let. Residential, we allow residential uses. Uh so I'm willing to go along with a a temporal, as I said before, like a ninety-day. Resident that you have to have lived there for at least ninety days in the preceding year, it shows a permanence. Uh I I'm willing to, even though I think that probably it's that also might be not. Inconformity with the law, but I'm willing to defend a ninety-day, maybe a hundred and twenty-day. Um period, but beyond that, I wouldn't.
Are you proving that?
Hey, can you can't prove it, and this move it really. I like the idea, but I.
Well, the owner could try bringing receipts that showed they were in the area, they could not prove, right, they're literally in that house, you're right. They could prove they were in the area and uh during the period. By their activities. Um I somehow think we're sort of again. As uh Johnson, I don't know, I we I understand the concern, Mr. White, but we don't want to have happen. But I wonder how real the fear is. I mean, remember, these ADUs can't be bought, like, is it seven hundred square feet?
Seven ninety, no.
Seven hundred or nine hundred, seven hundred?
One ninety.
One ninety-seven hundred.
Which that's a fifty-dollar rental.
Right in the rental.
Well. Well, I guess. Yeah, it's not the same thing as let's let's beg, we're going to let trailers on every lot where there could be families. You know, I mean, it's it is somewhat of a.
Yeah, I just I just looked through the uh DECD. Regulation as well. There's, I mean, there's no mention of this. It doesn't say you can't can't do it. It makes clear that statute says, but doesn't go any further than. Um one.
It it the other ten, though, I mean, what about what about the concept of like owner occupation versus? Residency status, like ignore the residency status. What if that what about owner occupation? Because it kind of accomplishes the same thing, right? You've got the owner, or who cares how long they live there, but the owner has to live there. Can't have the owner letting out their primary house. And then also letting, you can't, that would that would prevent what? That would that would negate the issue at hand here that I'm just thinking of the concern, but.
So you're saying the owner could occupy it for thirty days or three hundred and sixty-five days? That wouldn't it wouldn't matter? Or are you talking about?
Well, I think the owner could.
Permanent, it'd be complete occupancy for the entire year. What do you mean by occupy?
I mean, it's unlikely in the majority of cases, somebody's going to buy a property and then not act, you can't buy. You don't want somebody to buy. I think the thing that Brandon's pointing out is a real situation that that will occur. Which is people will buy cheap prop- cheaper properties. Put an accessory to my outfit properties, right? If you're if that if there's a demand here, we don't have anything in the ordinance, other ordinance. Sort of preventing. So the so the situation then is. I think some kind of. We're concerned about the legality. The residency status, that maybe it's about the occupation of the home, the primary. Has to be by the owner.
For the whole year? Some portion of the year, and that that's kind of where we started this.
Right, but if you're you're going to rent your house out first, say up to half the year or something or.
If you live in, you're saying, so you have to live there and you will get the permit. You have to live there when you get the permit, and then if you choose to rent it out. Well, I did, I think that's okay, but at least if you're living there.
But you, that means you bought the house and you're physically living there. And that kind of the case sort of run on the market for that.
You don't, you're not going to buy it, move in for a month to get the permit, then move back.
You're not, nobody's gonna do that.
Nobody's gonna do it.
Plus, people aren't going to live in the house for six months, you're renting out. Uh they may rent it out. They're not going to rent it out for six, live there for six months and then rent it out for a.
So you're saying the owner of the primary dwelling must occupy that dwelling at the time.
Consists.
Of application for eight. Is that true?
That's she. Then the snowbirds could still build them. Right, I mean, it's elevated.
I don't. I'm just thinking about this out loud.
Yeah. Well, they probably. They probably could, if they were living in Reedfield.
Build one over.
And they build the ADU.
That's the situation.
Yeah, I mean, they don't don't take me to that one. Personally, I don't think, I I don't like strict. I I want it to be as flexible as possible, but I'm trying, but I'm trying to think through my mind, it's the unintended consequences. Alan has to. Let's take some. Perspective on what could have likely happened. I mean, if the legislation does not say you can't do it. My experience with legislation is. If it. If it says you can't do it, can't do it, it doesn't say you can't do it, you can't do it.
So the other thing about the L U O revisions is that I had sent them to the town attorney so she could get a head start on them. You know, she knew where we were in process, that it was still a draft, that they've got the hearing next week. Uh but she has reviewed them and um um had a few comments, nothing, nothing specific. And Jack, I I still can't read the comments. Thank you for trying, but I still can't read them. So. Um.
Just didn't come up with her. Yeah.
She sent back the document and you can you can see where she's made a comment. There's a yeah, there's an interview there. It's now. Not sure what it is, I think it's like Google Docs, thank you.
Oh, yeah, she's done. Is it curious question?
Yeah, yeah. And so um. I can't open what's on it, so I don't know what they are. But Jack and I are supposed to meet with her and talk them through uh before the hearing. So um hopefully, uh we put out a couple of times this week. And so one thing I could do is run this by her. It's going to happen fast, most good with her anyway at some point. So. I could um. Run this by her and see what her thoughts are and, you know, she. I don't know, Jack, if you've looked at her comments. Um but she may have already commented on this piece, and I just don't know what comment is yet.
Yeah, I haven't seen it.
Uh uh could you not open it? I I sent it to you.
Oh, no, I opened it. I just didn't look at all her comments.
Oh, okay. Um.
I think unless there's a challenge to see. I mean, I'm I. I'd like to see us leave it in there and just see what happens.
Um.
If other towns have asked it. I mean, it does serve a purpose. It's not too restrictive. Still allows for a passenger, how many people want a permanent residence?
Well, I think there are quite a few who are not legal residents anymore in Maine. Who live in Reedfield. And they're paying uh well, they're not paying taxes in Florida, they're legal state. They're legal residents of Florida or some other place. I mean, by quite a few, I don't know if it's ten, I don't know, it's a hundred.
But then why do they need an accessory drawing in on a home they're not even living in?
Because they they in the summertime, they like entertain and family, they're going to whatever you go to, whatever.
But that's not the purpose of the ordinance, or the regulation, regulations not to. Provide an extra bedroom for friends. The idea is to provide. Residency for other. Uh residents living in Maine. Right?
Well, again, I go back to the plain language of the statute, which doesn't make that distinction. It just says. Says what it says.
So, Henry, are you suggesting that the language as it stands right now should just stay and not change it in any way?
Uh I I I agree. I think that's true, uh whether the language is primary legal residence or some other deviation of that. Terminology or treaty test, one of the that borders. But otherwise, I suggest leaving it pretty much the way it is. I don't I don't have a problem with the time to the permit. Or the time of application, right, the time of construction, we've got to plan.
Um, all right, so we've got that concept on the table, um. Um. Just the straight hundred and eighty-three day residency requirement that was put on the table. We've got the homestead exemption approach on the table. And then um. There is. Um. Did you provide language, Peter, right? Okay. Um, I've got it. I've just got too much. Okay, so you're saying I would require that the owner of the single-family dwelling establish that they resided in it. For at least ninety days during the preceding calendar year. So that is, that's um Peter's suggested language.
That's what I wrote, and you could. You could amend that, of course, that'd be a different number. It could be, you could add the word consecutive, if you want to establish more permanency somehow. If that matters. That they have to reside for at least ninety consecutive days during the proceeding, you know, whatever.
Well, the challenge to that, Peter, is that whatever the language is, has to be, you know, whichever way this goes, it's it's got to be. It's got to be something that can be proved easily by the CEO of the town, right? Well, having having an arbitrary number of days.
This is why I play out a homestead exemption, because.
Right.
It's easy just to go on the computer in town and see if it's. Has a homestead exemption. It says it right there, so that would be an easy way to confirm and do it all. And it's it's a state function too, so we're not reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, it has to be.
The state's saying, you know, you can have this exemption if you live here, if you're a resident, if you're domiciled. And we have that, we have it in our records, and that makes it easy to. Yeah, you know, enforce.
Otherwise, I would argue, Peter, your your point is still very good, but I would say just take away the timeframe, just it doesn't capture its involvement, like just.
And so it would it would say that they. Resided in it for some period of time during the preceding calendar year?
Just reside in the house. I don't I don't know.
And and then, you know, and then you get back to leaving some kind of.
You can't have something in ordinance that can't prove in an application.
John? What are your thoughts?
I I would go with what we've got here with the with the one question about maybe changing primary legal residents to permanent legal residents, because there is a term. So. Somebody questioned what it is, what is that? Maybe something already out there. But. Seems like we should run by a key attorney.
Yeah. Uh what was your term? Henry?
Permanent, permanent residence.
Per- just permanent residents?
Legal or permanent, uh forgot. Oops, that's the main divorce group, that's the wrong one. Got it. Permanent legal residence, that's the state's terminology.
So what we've got, just change the primary.
Right. That that's the that's the the that's the state's definition of. The place you domicile the most as your permanent home. Okay, so it's the physical place, so that's applicable versus the residency status, which is what we've got, went down that radical.
Okay, um so it's feeling to me like the majority. Of the board wants to take some kind of approach that includes a residency requirement. And um the words of that and the specific approach on. Need a little bit of work, but I mean, do I have that right? I mean, that's. Uh that's what I hear from you, John.
Yes, I I think that, you know, I'm I'm in Peter and Jack's camp that I'm not sure that this is going to fly. Um under the or under the under the law, the state law, but the thing is, I I agree, you know, that there are concerns here and and I don't. Object to any kind of a a residency requirement. What I would suggest doing is is the the uh town attorney's already got this. Just go and talk to her and raise these issues to her. If she says it's okay to have a residency requirement, then let's just. Let's just have one and and have have either the language that already exists or or what uh what Henry was just talking about. Um uh and Brandon, uh I think either one of those would be fine. I mean, I'll definitely drop out the uh hundred and eighty-three days or whatever. Um I don't I don't I don't care about that and and I think, you know, I think that the concerns are legitimate about what might happen. And it it would be better to have a more restrictive uh uh ordinance. That we then would have to change if somebody's suing us, but there are a lot of other towns that are doing the same thing. And um I I wouldn't be surprised at all if the if if in the passage of this law, they didn't really get into the weeds of this issue. So I think that the idea of us putting some residency requirement in there is fine. Um and and we'll just see what happens.
It'll be relaxing later if we want to do.
Yeah. Okay, um so um. As I mentioned, Jack and I have to have a conversation with Kristen about her comments. Um we can discuss this matter with her and see what she. What she thinks um and. Come back with the result of that next time. Um one thing that we still need to do is um. As a board, we need to vote on this package of revisions to take to public hearing. We didn't do that last time because we were still in the midst of all this revision. And so I I guess I would I would suggest that that we vote on the revision package. Broadly. But acknowledge that the specific approach to the occupancy issue is um is still is still pending. So include that in a motion. Um but.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we just just note twenty? There's one more issue. Uh note twenty to the table. Which is, I guess, what is it, page? Six. I'll be revisions, page six of Jemail's revisions. I think right now the way it's ordered is incorrect. And I put that as one of the things I put in the last paragraph of the email I think yesterday. I think the minimum lot size doubling only applies to. Additional dwelling units which are not accessory dwelling.
Okay.
Am I right about that? I mean, that's the way I read the statute. Um the.
Yes, that's true. Yeah, I heard.
Right now, literally, the stone says you can't put an ADU unless we double your lots. That's not.
Yeah, no, no. Where is that now?
Why I propose. Which are not.
Yeah, I've I've got it in your um.
It's it's funny, isn't it?
I don't have it.
To the table, so you got.
I'm looking at the eighty thousand one, right?
Yeah, that's true.
But why is that any different than the other two though?
No, there's there's another one.
Maybe you'll be maybe I'll like.
I don't know. No, wait a minute. No, uh.
At least he did twenty.
I see twenty, so that's.
What does twenty say, Peter?
It it says physically, it's a decision for the tables that when you're adding a unit, you're gonna double the lot size. You can only do that by. Having a lot size that's equal to the previous lot size, another double in essence. Which you uh which uh but for ADUs, you don't have to do that.
Well, you said the same thing, but they keep. The terminology that it uses in that is additional dwelling, not accessory dwelling.
Yeah, but that could be, there's no. Additionally, you can be an ADU or it could be just any dwelling unit. But I don't believe the term additional dwelling is a defined term. That's the problem here.
Okay. Yeah, so you're saying that.
So additionally, other than ADU, uh has to be. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
But if somebody wanted a secondary. If they could, the secondary single-family home.
Yeah.
On the same.
Yeah, they have to, they have to double it.
Well, they have to double it under our provision, under our.
Under our existing.
Proposals, under our ordinance, yes. You know, there's, and the statute is horribly ambiguous at that point, but I think you have the discretion to say that. Yeah, double.
Paula.
Yeah.
Uh I did find Kristen's comment on the. ADU. Uh owner occupancy requirement. She said. I do not believe this provision is authorized by thirty-eight forty-three sixty-four dash B unless the owner occupation requirement is directly tied. To restriction on short-term rental.
Ah, marvelous.
So we did red ordinance that to do it, she says.
So we'll have to talk to her about that.
Yeah.
Talk to her about it.
Yeah.
Eventually.
But she's got the right comment in the sense that we're on the right, we're on the right concern that if that's her comment, because it means that it has, we did, we need to accelerate that the. Ordinance on rental.
Yeah, but it's not gonna get accelerated the next week.
No, but I'd say it was in the next year.
Yeah.
Or faster.
Yeah, okay.
But talk to her about it and see what she says. But I mean, if other towns put it in. We should find out what town has done that.
Yeah, I mean, they have. I mean, Janelle said that they have.
But that doesn't impress me. I've seen towns where those sorts of things.
Yeah, I mean, and you know, and they probably took the approach of, well, well, maybe we'll get challenged, maybe we won't.
She also said that the seven hundred foot, seven hundred square foot limit is the smallest she's ever seen.
Well, but then the laws completely, the state law and the D C D C D rule are. Silent on that issue. So I'd say we have discretion to cap it at seven hundred.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think it says specifically that towns can put a cap.
Yeah, it does say they can put a cap.
Yeah.
So unless someone could argue that's unreasonable, I think they can argue that it's unreasonable for the cap of seven hundred square feet.
Yeah. Okay.
I will note some of her comments in the or the solar ordinance too were. Not necessarily aligned with what we did entirely.
Yeah, and that's usually the case. She usually has some comics.
Jack, when you and Paula meet with with her, uh would you ask her about that tie-in with the uh short-term rental uh ordinance? Just just ask her what, you know, why, you know, why um. Uh you you know, why would be, why would we be able to do that if we had a short-term rental? Ordinance as opposed to if we didn't?
Right.
Well, we could do that, but we can't do this.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, just explore that with her. I mean, again, I, you know, I I I'm I'm fine with uh having a residency requirement. Just to see, you know, if it'll fly, but um. Uh you know, I I just, I've got some concerns, just like you've expressed and Peter has that about the. The fact that the ordinance doesn't seem to have any kind of residency requirement in it. But but again, I'm I'm sorry, the ordinance, I meant the law. The law doesn't have that in it, the state law. But again, you know, I I think that, you know, if if we've got concerns about it, then we can write that into our ordinance.
Right.
Okay, any any other issues? Um with the package generally, we'll we'll take this to Kristen. We'll talk about the different approaches that have come up um. See what she says about it um.
I do have a doubt. It's a dumb question, probably. I don't see it here anywhere where there's a limit how many. Units you could have if you have enough weight. Is there a limit? To building multiple homes?
You'd have the sub requirement.
Measure law.
Okay, so we would follow that. But if you're not dividing the land though. Because you're allowed to build additional dwelling units on the same piece of land, which is multi-single-family homes. So is there a limit to how many of those you could put if you had something there? And they're all rented out. So you still own the land.
I don't remember the nuances of the subdivision law. Jack, do you recall? It it seems to me that. Um.
But if you're not subdividing the land, he's saying if you just build all these. Units.
Yeah, you know, what you're.
Yeah, well, you I I mean, under that circumstance, you'd have to, you know, you'd have to vote the the lot requirement.
Right.
Right.
So say you bought a hundred acre lot. You could theoretically put thirty homes in there.
Well.
And rent the ball. If you didn't subdivide. If you kept the balls angle.
Well, it's interesting, the statute, this section forty-three sixty-four dash A. Says that a town must allow on a lot with one existing dwelling, you there's an addition of up to two more. So it's sort of, since we can cap it at three.
That's a, I'm asking, is there a cap?
Well, that's how I interpret that we. That provision, but.
Is that in our ordinance?
I don't know what our ordinance says. I couldn't find it.
Yeah.
Have a cap.
Um. Isn't there something? That triggers subdivision, even if it's rental?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Uh like.
Why isn't what Peter just read in our ordinance?
Not only rental, but also.
Um. We put, let's see, and. That piece is about um multiple dwelling units um. What we have in the new language about multiple dwelling units is in accordance with the VA. Forty-three sixty-four A, multiple dwelling units are allowed on lots where residential users are allowed. Provided that each dwelling unit needs the minimum land area and other dimensional requirements of Article Seven. And all other applicable requirements of the ordinance.
Right. Peter Peter read was that there was a cap of three.
Well, you can put a cap, but you could cap it, because I don't think we have a cap.
No, we don't.
So that's what I'm saying. You could, you could buy a hundred acres, put thirty houses in. You know, assuming that you had the right road condition and everything. And then you have a village of rentals, a village of other school.
I'm looking at G two, the accessory dwelling units, because it just was one. Accessory dwelling unit in the law.
That's. This is just a regular dwelling, like an additional.
This would be like a three bedroom house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Why don't we put the up to three units?
And if the statute also says, by the way, not that, that if it's in, if you're building, if you're owning land that doesn't need growth area, you have to, the town. Could only cap it at four. Four dwelling units. For a.
In in a growth area.
In a growth area. Three otherwise, four in a growth area.
Yeah, we should add that.
So we could add that. What's everybody else? What's your thought about that? You want to put it in, put a cap? Um I mean, we could do it that way. We could, we could say. Up to three or four in growth areas.
Unheard.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's unlikely, so we'll do that. You never know.
Who knows?
Hundred fifty units. So they're gonna have to build a school. With all after a hundred fifty units. I'm just trying to see in our subdivision ordinance, if it's like a trigger.
Yeah, there like, it's gotta be.
There 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 is, there is a trigger.
Regardless of law.
Yeah, and and I know that the subdivision law is. Implicated in certain types of like. Multi-family dwellings, if I'm not mistaken. That's right, Chip.
Yeah. We dealt with that, the corner posts. When they want to put four or five in there, they have them limited to three.
Or as far as you're limited. Four units in a rental or a package building. How many of those buildings do you allow on property? Whatever whatever fits within the acreages of the property.
Right, so you got what?
Only for for you to build. On a fifty acre law or a hundred acre law, say.
Yeah.
I was a metal sub, I guess that's what I was wondering, is there. Here.
So. The existing ordinance, um we have a piece on multi-family dwellings. And it says in part, each building shall contain no more than four dwellings.
Right. What if you had, like, a piece of land you could build? An empty number of those.
Um.
And well, when you get a hundred acres, you could build twenty, fifty. It's about zone. Two acre, three acre.
Um but the multiple dwelling units allowed, I mean, that just talks about. Dwelling units um. So the limit that we impose on those. I would think also applies to multi-family dwellings, not just single-family. So you can only have four units. In a building. And you can only have up to three of those buildings.
So there is. I just couldn't, okay.
Yeah, there's there's that limit about the 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 other, the other limit about, you know, how many dwelling units um. That isn't in here. We can, we can include that. But what does exist is no more than four dwelling units in a single multi-family dwell. Okay, um. So we'll add that. We'll add the um up to three and four in growth areas in. Uh E. Anything else? Okay, so we should vote on taking the package to hearing um. And I would qualify a motion um by by saying that um. The final language of G um is still to be worked on. And um. We will add. What's that?
It's also, I mean, Kristen has raised a number of issues that we'll need to discuss too.
Yeah, yeah, and we we can do that outside of this, you know, outside of the vote that. You know, we need to take a vote um as a board to take the thing to public hearing, but that doesn't. Preclude us from changing the draft in response to legal comments or comments that we get at the at the hearing, so.
What's it do? What's in public hearing and what is it due by a certain date?
Um it has to, uh because the town meeting process has a lot of different scheduling points in it. Um I had talked to Eric about this and um as long as he has. The. Final draft by the week after the hearing. We'll meet those, we'll meet those dates. So I think we'll have to communicate about final language um. Probably via email because we won't have another meeting. Um. After that, so um. We can let everyone know what um what Kristen says about the occupancy requirement and. Um and then uh put that out and we'll have to communicate that way. I I don't know what else to do unless everybody wants to schedule. You know, another meeting to come in and talk about that. And vote it.
Depends on public worship. Yes, the total caring, but. I guess it's nobody's gonna be here.
I think there might be one or two people.
Same.
So um do you think you might want to do another meeting to talk about those last changes or do you want to reserve those until after the hearing? We can, yeah, we could do it that way. Yeah, yeah. And there may be, you know, depending on our comments we receive, there might be some that we want to talk about, so. We could plan to do that immediately following. All right, so I would take a motion to approve the draft to send to public hearing. Pending. Development final wording for. G and Article eight. And with the addition of the up to three dwelling units and four in growth areas. In Article. Eight, one E. Second.
Second, good question.
Okay, discussion.
Sorry, does that, does that include Peter's, we need to add Peter's comment about table of uses.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, it, it needs to include that also. That correction. So.
So I'll, so I'll move it with that, with the amendment. Yep.
Okay, moved in second then with that. Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Ben?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we'll talk to Kristen, hearing next Tuesday, the nineteenth at six thirty. And we, following that, we'll talk about this language and we can consider any comments we receive and. Hopefully resolve those if we do, if we do get comments, Chuck.
Everybody afraid that there's not a lot of people because we're stuck in the downstairs meeting room next week.
We're going to be up here. I rescheduled, like, I'm just going to have a very scheduled, we'll be up here. Reedfield, you, we get upstairs and the other connected people that are in the library.
You convinced Eric, couldn't you?
Yes, this is ours.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Okay, the only other thing is a set of minutes from February twenty first.
Were they mailed out, emailed out on a particular day, the February twenty first, Lawrence? I just didn't find them.
Oh, I think I just emailed them out. End of last week, right? It was fairly recent. Friday, okay, yeah. Did you not even?
I probably did receive them and didn't.
Well, because we have, like, we just got all these news. Firewall, safety, security stuff.
I did, I know your name from my search and did not see them.
Yeah, because I've got somebody on another one of my boards that isn't receiving my emails as well, so I'll make a note and check into it. I was going to give you those.
Gosh, Charles Tullman's here.
Tito.
Tito.
Is he the guy that we worked with on the top flight?
Yes, yes, yes. And apparently if, if Reedfield wants to use North Star for other projects, Charles would be. The planner that they would assign to me.
Oh.
I, I had a few, a few edits. I didn't send them to you electronically because I didn't do them until last night, so. In the paragraph under public meeting, Paula discussed toward the end of that, it says. Will be needed for article vote at town meeting in June. I would say needed to meet the schedule for the town meeting vote in June. New York is that. Needed to meet the schedule. For the town meeting. Vote in June. Thank you. Yeah, that sounds okay. And then there's a paragraph that talks about the L U O revisions and. I scratched most of that because a lot of it is. Those are issues that they evolved again, and so, you know, talking for instance about section twenty nine. That was Jamel's old section that we got rid of and so it, it seemed that it would be better just to put this in really general rather than specific terms. Because it might be confusing if people were to go back and, and read them, so what I did there was to say. Toward the end of the first sentence, some of the changes. Addressed instead of made. Okay. Addressed. Reorganization of Article eight. Okay. ADUs in non-conforming structures. And the standards for ADUs. And then just get rid of all, you know, all the bulleted. Okay. Language. And. Then. The only other thing, that next sentence, the board also discussed. Rather than say we discussed limiting short term rentals. Yeah, why don't we say the board also discussed the residency requirement. For construction of ADUs. And the last sentence there. Paula added a second sentence to the ADU definition. I would just end it there. Would, because again, there's no section twenty nine, so. Anybody else have any edits, suggestions for minutes? If not, I would take a motion on the minutes first of February twenty one.
We, the gentleman says, men.
Is there a second? Men in seconds, discussion. All those in favor? John?
Yes.
Jack, yes.
I understand.
Aye, aye.
Okay, I think that's it, unless anybody has anything else. We'll see you on the nineteenth.
So, but you wouldn't have anything else to do.
No, just a very follow up. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
No, we, we had talked about doing two meetings in March and there would be this one and next week, the month of, yeah, and then we'll go, go into the regular schedule for April.
God willing.
What?
God willing.
Have a nice evening, everybody.